I'd like to reconvene this meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to my Miss Kowalski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to hear a motion on holding a couple of items before we approve the agenda. Under Administration and Human Resources, item one, and under Educational Services, item two.
What's that?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item F, Special Recognizations and Presentations. Student Representatives will make the presentation of the Student of the Month Awards to two students from each of our secondary schools in the Petaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of May 2012. And how this works is, we have the student representatives come forward and introduce each of the students individually and tell us some wonderful things about them and why they were selected. And the student comes up here and looks into the camera as we hear about their accomplishments. And then afterwards, they sit down and we have their families rise so they can be acknowledged for their support. So first, I'd like to have the representative from Kennelworth Junior High move forward.
Hi, I'm Amique and I'm in eighth grade at Kennelworth. Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the May Student of the Month, Tiffany Chen. Tiffany is an extraordinary young woman who has excelled here at Kennelworth. She has maintained excellent grades for her entire Kennelworth career and she currently is earning a 4.0. Tiffany's teachers say that she's a very conscientious student. She turns in all of her work on time and it is clear that she takes the time to do it to the best of her ability. Teachers say that she approaches every assignment with her best effort and enthusiasm. They are impressed by her organization and creativity. Teachers also feel that they can rely on Tiffany to actively participate in class discussions and small group work. Tiffany's peers know her to be kind and compassionate to others and they know they can count on her to help keep their group on task and focused. All of her teachers consider Tiffany to be a role model for other students and a pleasure to have in class. Tiffany is proud of her academic success this year. Her favorite classes this year have been history and science. She also enjoys history because she enjoys learning about past civilizations and studying religion. She is also like science because she's fascinated by astronomy. In addition to her hard work at school, Tiffany devotes much of her time to taking classes to learn how to read and write in Mandarin. She speaks Mandarin with her family but she hopes to learn how to also be bilingual. She knows that this will benefit in her future career or help her be prepared if her family ever moves back to Asia. Ultimately, her goal is to be trilingual as she is also studying Spanish at school. Beyond her academic pursuits, Tiffany used to take piano lessons and she also enjoys spending time with friends and reading. She enjoys books that are entertaining and intellectually stimulating, such as The Hunger Games and The Da Vinci Code. Tiffany is especially happy that she's been able to earn good grades and make her family proud. She wants to continue making her family proud by attending a prestigious university. Eventually, she would like to pursue a career in business or in the medical field. Her ultimate goal is to be able to find a career that is financially beneficial but also fulfills her passions. At Kennelworth, we are confident that Tiffany will be successful in whichever path she chooses because of her diligence initiative and conscientiousness. Congratulations, Tiffany.
I'd like to have a seat and Tiffany's family, if you would rise and be acknowledged for your support.
Hi, I'm Lauren and our next Student of the Month is Jason Ventigo. Jason is an eighth grade student who has impressed all of his teachers well at Kennelworth. Jason's teachers chose him to be Student of the Month for several reasons. They find him to be a conscientious student who always has a smile to share. They consider him to be a bright student who works every day to do his personal best. He asks questions when he doesn't understand and it is obvious that he has thought about the problem before he asks. He works well with his fellow students. Additionally, Jason is a top-notch writer and reader who has demonstrated motivation, effort, and perseverance throughout this school year. Jason is also a valued member of any group or classroom setting because he can always be counted on to model the academic skills necessary for success. Work right in class and turning his work on time and complete. His positive attitude and mature sense of humor make him a pleasure to have in class. While Jason's teachers are very pleased with his performance, Jason is striving to improve. He currently has five A's but his goal is to turn that last B into an A by the end of the semester so he can leave junior high with a 4.0. Jason's favorite subject is math but he has also excelled this year in English. He wrote a novel as part of a class project. His novel Shake List is now available on sale on Amazon. He has also read an excerpt at Copper Fields earlier this month. Outside of school, Jason enjoys challenging himself in athletics. Jason was a valued member of the Kennelworth track team this year and made it to the finals for the 200 meter sprint. He also plays baseball and soccer on a club team. He looks forward to trying out for athletics and sports next year. Jason is well-known around Kennelworth for being cheerful, kind, and having a great attitude. Jason's family is extremely proud of all of his accomplishments. Jason has big plans for his future. He wants to attend a good college such as UC Berkeley or UC Davis where his parents attended. His ultimate goal is to pursue a career in technology. Kennelworth is confident that Jason will be able to reach all of his future dreams throughout his positivity, effort, and enthusiasm for learning. Congratulations, Tiffany.
And Jason's family, if you would rise and be acknowledged. Okay, and our representatives from Petaluma Junior.
Hi, my name is Ty and I'm an ASB student at PJHS. And Petaluma Junior High School has selected Healy, Kelly Stevens Jackson as the May Student of the Month. An inspirational and motivated student, Kelly Stevens Jackson has been chosen as the May Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High School. Kelly, known as Coco, is a hard worker, intelligent, determined, and resourceful. Her teachers all agree that she is a pleasure to have in class due to her wonderful attitude and great effort. She is very respectful to others and is a great role model for her peers. Over the last two years, Coco has earned a Shining Star Award as an outstanding student and two Silver Academic Awards for high academic achievement. Coco is a genuine leader and proves her abilities through participation in leadership programs at all of her schools. At Petaluma Junior High School, Coco helps set up dances and maintains the marquee and the student store. She humbly takes pride in improving school climate by helping teachers and taking her leadership role beyond the classroom, influencing peers to make good choices. When asked about the most important issues facing her and her peers, she states she is concerned about drugs and alcohol use. She does not want her peers to change where they are and instead hopes they can live their lives to their fullest potentials. One peer states, "Coco is always caring and thinks of others before herself. She always tries to include other people with great sportsmanship. She is someone we all look up to." Coco's quiet and leadership teacher agrees. He states, "Coco has grown into a poised and self-assured young lady over the last two years. Coco is well-liked by her classmates and eager to jump in on any help with tests. She has a marvelous sense of humor and a caring attitude towards her friends." Outside of school, Coco is engaged in numerous activities. She plays softball with the Petaluma Girls Association and is enrolled in a three-year confirmation program at church. Giving back to her community, Coco is in her third year of raising money for cancer winners for the Relay for Life event at CASA, walking over 20 miles at each event. Coco will be attending St. Vincent de Paul High School next year. She hopes to continue in leadership and work hard to earn good grades. Coco's future goals include attending college to study law and become an attorney. Coco's mother explains, "Coco continually amazes me with her work ethic and dedication to schoolwork. I'm very proud of her and I totally believe she deserves this honor." Congratulations, Kelly Stevens Jackson.
I'm Emily Shar and I'm an ASB officer at Petaluma Junior High School. Petaluma Junior High School selected Ryan Cardiff as the May Student of the Month. A bright, motivated, and hard-working student, Ryan Cardiff has been selected as the Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High School for May 2012. Teachers benefit from having Ryan in their class as he is responsible, kind, generous, cooperative, and contributes to a positive learning environment. Adults and students alike enjoy his funny sense of humor and optimistic outlook on life. His yearbook teacher states, "You can always count on Ryan for an intelligent answer to a literary analysis question or a humorous aside when things are getting a little too serious. He understands abstract material and reads the mood of the class and teacher far better than most people his age." Ryan has earned a 4.0 grade point average this year while taking challenging academic courses such as Advanced English and Geometry. He has also maintained a perfect attendance award this year which has earned him a perfect attendance award. Outside of school, Ryan enjoys spending time with his friends playing basketball and watching movies at home and at the theater. He is currently attending the Petaluma High School football practices and plans on trying out for the freshman football team. Ryan is very excited about his future goal to attend a really good college. He plans on continuing to take advanced classes at Petaluma High School and maintain his high GPA. A current issue that is important to him is drug and alcohol abuse amongst his peers. Ryan's mother states, "I truly admire my son. He works diligently to get his work done and challenges himself academically. He is affectionate, sensitive, kind, and cares about others. He has an easy way of interacting with people and is well-liked by everyone he meets. People almost always remark on his great sense of humor and outgoing personality. Ryan inspires great loyalty in his friends and is turning into an influential leader. As his mother, I could not possibly be more proud." Congratulations, Ryan Cardiff.
Okay, and our representative from Petaluma High.
Petaluma High would like to welcome Garret Langford as the First Student of the Month for May 2012. Garret Langford has worked very hard all four years of high school. He currently takes all AP courses and holds a GPA of 4.75. At school, he also has been CSF officer for the past three years and is now currently the secretary. Garret has been a varsity soccer player for three years and has won many honors including Coach's Award, Scholar-Athlete, First Team All-League two years in a row, Team Captain, and most recently Press Democrat Athlete of the Year for Petaluma High. Outside of the classroom, Garret is passionate about activities such as producing music, playing many instruments, playing soccer, designing iPhone applications, and painting. Awards that he has received outside of school include the Best Tools for Students Award at the National Association of Music Merchants Trade Show in Anaheim, California, where he showcased two of his iPhone apps. Garret has decided to attend UC Berkeley this fall with an intended major of Computer Science while playing soccer and making music. Overall, Garret is charismatic and excellent young man with high aspirations and will continue to work hard for the rest of his life. Congratulations, Garret.
Garret's family?
And Petaluma High would like to recognize Kelly Strands, the second. Kelly is a focused and passionate individual. Her dedication to excellence is evident in her work outside and in of the classroom. She is a class valedictorian and has earned an academic GPA of 4.42 for all four years of high school. She has been an active member of the California Scholarship Federation throughout high school. An avid reader, Kelly is a member of the Council of the Written One, Petaluma High School's Book Club. Kelly leads a busy life outside of school. She has been a ballet dancer for 13 years and a member of the Petaluma City Ballet Company for the past six. Kelly finds great joy in dancing and spends over 15 hours a week at the ballet studio. Kelly is also a volunteer at Saks Hospice at Petaluma Front Door. She has volunteered there for four years and has enjoyed meeting new people while working there. In the fall of 2012, Kelly will be attending the College of William &amp; Marriott in Williamsburg, Virginia, where she intends to study history. Congratulations, Kelly.
And our representative from Casa Grande.
Hi, my name is Bill Ramirez and I'm office ASB president. Our First Student of the Month for May 2012 is Muhammad Ali. Muhammad Ali, born in Palestine and raised in Northern California, is ranked 16th in his class with a weighted GPA of 4.5. He will be attending Santa Rosa Junior College studying Mechanical Engineering with the goal to transfer in two years and achieve a master's degree. In the future, he hopes to have a great impact on the engineering world and maybe later in life may hang up the coat and become a professor. Although he has a passion for physics and mathematics, he does keep his mind optimistic for other fields of science such as economics or biology. He has gone through a tremendous experience living in the Middle East for two years and moving back to Petaluma where he will finish his high school education on May 25. This experience allowed him to grow as a person and learn from two different cultures which have allowed him to be proud of both his nationalities. His experience of being a part of the Gaucho's football team has allowed him to grow as a person and form friendships with great people he may have never met without playing football. Outside of school activities, he adventures along with friends doing different activities such as hiking, biking, working out, and playing soccer. At this point in time, these experiences and connections have had an important influence on the Muhammad Ali of the present. Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month for May 2012 is Deegan Babala. Deegan Babala has been a student at Casa Grande for all four years of his high school career, achieving a GPA of 4.05 and a class rank of 17. His sophomore year, he was listed as one of the top 10 students of his class. He played for the Casa Grande Boys JV Soccer Team during his freshman and sophomore years, and then he played during his junior and senior years. Deegan's primary passion is soccer. He has been very active in Petaluma's soccer community. He is a licensed coach, licensed referee, paid trainer, and ex-player. Of these, his favorite role is his coaching position on his younger sister's traveling team. Deegan will be attending Lewis and Clark College to study sociology, hopes to one day return to Petaluma where he can help improve the city's soccer programs. His intentions are to inspire young players to develop not only as individuals but as a community, praying that for a successful future after soccer and school. Congratulations.
Well, as you have heard, we have some amazing students in our district and it is always the best part of the meeting when we get to acknowledge their accomplishments. I also want to thank all of our student representatives for your service to reporting to the board this year. We really appreciate that direct connection and all of the information that you provide. And for those of you who are here, I guess we'll see all of you at the eighth grade promotions on Thursday and Friday and the high school graduations on Friday and Saturday. So we're very excited about the week in front of us, as I'm sure you are. We have some reports and some budget stuff but we expect that some of you might be studying freelance so we will take a very short recess and let you sneak out really quickly while we get ready for our next meeting. Oh, I was going to say what we're doing. Our next report is, I will have Assistant Superintendent Jane Escobedo introduce.
So we are very happy to have tonight Eric Buckman and Scott Riggert from Casa Grande High School to talk about the SLC grant. This is kind of a yearly update that we do every year and we've got an extra added bonus tonight because they're also going to talk a little bit about the post-secondary data that's been gathered and a little bit about where the kids are going to school next, you know, the seniors. And David Stewart is here and he's going to jump in right at the very end just a little bit about Petaluma High School.
Typical. So I'm just going to turn upside down what Jane just said, that there's going to be a lot of emphasis tonight on post-secondary education data and embedded within that are some comments about the SLC work. A great way to start is to consider briefly the Petaluma City Schools' mission and its alignment with one of four CASA Small Learning Community Goals. And both of them speak to kids' futures beyond high school, beyond their K through 12 experience in Petaluma. And I want to emphasize tonight that there is perfect alignment and that the mission of both the site and the district are to create opportunities for our young people, college and career. And we're paying close attention to that and giving heavy emphasis to such an important goal. In my experience as an administrator now, in five years, I'm coming to realize that the best ideas are the simplest ones and the most obvious ones, the ones you come up with and have a Homer Simpson moment. So what we're talking about tonight is considering the importance of knowing where our graduates go and knowing how successful they are. And I would, at the beginning of the presentation, have everyone consider how much attention we pay to data related to things that may help chart a course for a student but it's not the course. And the data we're now looking at gives us very real, very authentic, and meaningful information that we've never seen before and, in my mind, may be the most important dataset we could consider when considering the success of the district and our school system. How many of our kids are getting into two- and four-year colleges, vocational schools, and most importantly, how well are they doing when they get there? So Scott and I have been doing a lot of work related to the Small Learning Community Grant to try to access this material, gather it, analyze it, and disseminate it to staff. And we're here tonight to present a snapshot of the work we've done the last three years to do this. So in 2008, a group of staff, myself, Scott, some counselors, teachers, wrote a supplement to our large federal grant which is focused on the gathering and dissemination of post-secondary education data. This is just the most important sentence out of it, but we said we're going to do this, that we're going to track post-secondary data as a means of better preparing our students for success in college. And we've worked very hard to do that. We are essentially looking at four different datasets to present a picture of post-secondary success. We're doing a lot of work to survey both our students in the senior class. We're also surveying our alumni one year out of CASA and also alumni parents one year out of CASA. We're doing a lot of work to look at the Early Assessment Program directly connected with STAR data. We're keeping a close eye on our Advanced Placement Program and how those students are doing. And most importantly, for the first time, we have access to post-secondary education data which allows us to see where every CASA graduate is, assuming they're enrolled in a program vocational, two-year, four-year, or anywhere in the country. So this is a nod to technology and what it's allowing us to do that perhaps five years ago we could never do before.
I've never been in one of these before. Can you ask questions or do you have to smile and nod?
No, we ask questions.
Okay, I was just like, you know, the interviews and you just keep smiling. We just keep talking. So in case you don't know what anything is, like the EAP, please ask. I don't know, we'll just kind of go on from there. So before Jane flips to the next slide, what we really want you to look at is not the actual data that you're going to see here. Everything I'm going to show you is a whole topic for conversation and I hope it sparks your interest in what you're seeing here. But what we're trying to show you is just what is it that we're doing? And if you have other questions later, we can talk about that. So I'm going to kind of move through these quickly just in the interest of time. So I guess this is your, well, you can say the word. So what we started doing now with email, we've been trying to capture as many emails as we can upon graduation and basically send out a survey to former students and their parents to try to assess, in their opinion, now that your child is out in the world, what do you think about how well CASA Grande prepared your child for the world of work, the world of college, wherever they may be? And this is our, this is our most recent one from the class of 2011.
Yeah, 10-11. So at the top, the handout is addressing the Senior Exit Survey. This is the class of 2010-11 from last year. The current class just finished today and the data is too new to even compile. But what you have is the actual results of the graduating class of 2011. This was done in May, just before graduation. It's directly attached to the work we're doing to track the success of the SLC clusters. On your own time, you can review the data. I do want to point out one specific data point which we're very excited about, and that is number 11. Do you feel that there's an adult on campus that you can go to for guidance or personal support? So we're showing 82% of our seniors saying yes. Prior to the initiation of the SLC program in Petaluma City Schools, this number at CASA was 41%. And it's my understanding, I don't know all the details of the history, but I know Greta Pigay often cited that that low number, less than half of our seniors having a personal connection, was largely the impetus to move towards small learning communities. So this, I find, is a measure of huge success, at least in the personalization of the program. And of course, take your time to look over the rest of the datasets. I also wanted to share with you from last year's graduating class, I think pretty positive results coming from our student alumni. This is 100 respondents out of about 380, so pretty good responses. Be aware that the kids who are responding tend to be the ones who are doing well. And that's really important. I think it would be irresponsible of me to say otherwise. So these kids are enrolled in four-year schools primarily, many of them working part-time jobs. But they're saying that, you know, 68% of them are saying yes, the high school prepared us for the academic rigor of college. And the parents, a few more are saying yes, the school prepared our child well for the rigor of college. So we're pleased with those numbers. There's room for improvement, for sure. And one of the problems with surveys is we can't capture everyone. And I'm sure without everyone, these numbers would be much lower.
So surveys are great, but some of the, some hard data, I think, is even better. The EAP, I don't know, I'm not sure how much you knew about it, but it is, it's part of the STAR testing. It was developed by the CSU to essentially measure college readiness in the junior year, which has been fantastic because then it says, oh, well, this is where I am now. And then senior, if you're not college-ready, you have senior year. So this is, this is some of the data that we've been tracking. One, we're very proud of, first of all, our participation rate for juniors. Basically, basically every junior participates in the EAP. That's been a big sort of cultural change in getting students to realize this isn't an entrance exam, it's really kind of a checkpoint and really can work to their advantage. English has been making steady gains. English has been making steady gains in terms of that. So roughly almost 40% of juniors would be deemed college-ready if they were walking into a CSU and they could take English 1A and not have to remediate. Of course, our goal is to continue to move that up. Math's a little more problematic. So in math, first of all, if you notice, our participation rate back in 2008 was 46%. A lot of students are afraid of math. And just getting them to take this test and say, you know what, I want to really know where I am, was a huge step. And that's been sort of one of the results of the SLC grant and the time I've had to do this. And what really stands out, and getting back to the honesty on this, is that right-hand bar there is those are students who essentially in their junior year aren't even in Algebra II. So when you initially look at the data, when we first did initially, first PowerPoint doesn't scale things to 100. They just scaled to the top of the whatever bar it is. All the bars look really tall. So I teach math, first thing I just crush it and put it up to 100, made everything look more real than it is. That bar on the right is still high, although it looks like it's moving down, or that we hope it is. So this is something that we really used to focus on. So what do we do now in the classroom? How do we get students in the right classes in Algebra II by junior year to move those bars? Another thing, obviously, a measure of college readiness, our Advanced Placement tests. And I've been tracking this over the years. And a couple of things to look at. One is the, you know, 3, 4, 5 is our pass rate. We've been very, but if you look at the increase in the number of tests that we're offering, and yet we have a pretty, our pass rate's been pretty steady on that. It's huge. The reason it kind of ends here actually is DataQuest, I called them yesterday. It's the state of California, but they've lost so many people, they haven't had someone to actually compile the data. They're still hoping that they can. And so also, just to put it in perspective, Annalee is the only other school in the county that has the same percentage take rate with a better pass rate than Casa Grande. So we're very proud of this, but it's also a sign of how we're measuring college readiness of our students. So this moves into the, it's called the National Student Clearinghouse. And essentially, what I do at the end of every year is I query the ARIs. I get a list of all the names of every graduate. I reformat the whole Excel file and then I send it off to these guys. And essentially, what they do then is they can track all our students over time if they've been enrolled in a school. So Eric's, well, I'm kind of just pointing some of this out. Eric is going to give you a little snapshot. Eric went back to Washington DC and I put this together just to kind of give people a sense of how powerful this is and sort of how granular the data is and the information. Basically, this goes back to 2004. I think that was about the earliest I could get ARI's data from. And if you look at this, it gives us a sense of, okay, well, freshman year following graduation at Casa Grande, how many, what percent of our students are enrolling in four-year colleges, two-year colleges? What you have in your hands, I just, every kid, every semester is queried and I get a report back for it. And I took little snapshots of it so you can kind of see where, how different kids have just have gone from, you know, two years at the JC, they went to a four-year, if they graduated, it's there. One student, you'll see, is just blank. They never entered.
Yeah, so I can interject really quick. If we look at Blake, he went straight from Casa into UC Santa Cruz. You can see he spent two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 semesters, finished with a degree in legal studies. Obviously went to Santa Clara for a master's degree and is continuing to work on that. The next student, Claire, you can see, started at the JC, did two years there, successfully transferred to Santa Cruz and finished with a BA in economics. So two success stories.
Gavin at the top has never enrolled in a school.
Yeah. David has jumped all over the place. From the University of Oregon to a community college, back to the University of Oregon to a community college, back to the University of Oregon, back home to the junior college, still has not completed a degree, either AA or four-year, and so on and so forth. So I think the point here is, if time allowed, if resources allowed, we can get incredibly detailed information about every graduate from the district, going back as far as we can provide data. We've provided data all the way to 2004, so we almost have 10 years, which, again, given time and resources, we could learn a lot about how successful our program is.
So one of the things we've also been paying attention to is really freshman to sophomore persistence in college. We realize that at some point, what we are doing at Casa Grande is going to, there's a lot of other variables that why kids move around in college. And so we're really focusing on the front end of the college readiness. And we kind of look at this as, you know, we think, okay, are they, do they finish their freshman year and continue on their sophomore year? We would like to think that we have a large role in that.
Jane, will you go back one?
Sure.
I just, for context's sake, so, you know, class of 2010, we had 77% of Casa students go to a two- or four-year school. The state average is 57%, that's reported by the LA Times, so to create context here. And the other point I would like to make, you know, when I try to look at it with the glass half-full is, you know, the recession is hitting hard right in this period, 2008, 2009, and our numbers are stable. If you look at state numbers, they're beginning to decline at this point, given the expense of the four-year schools combined with the recession.
Eric, when you say two- and four-year schools, what does that mean?
Well, a two-year junior college, we have 52% of our kids.
So are they only junior colleges or it could be?
Vocation.
Vocation.
Yeah, that would be included in the vocational. That's a great question. And then our four-year colleges and universities, primarily CSU and UC.
But you also track that state or?
It's included in, you know, this is about a 40-page report. It's very detailed. We're just kind of giving you some of the highlights. Go ahead. And then this is one, it's a six-year graduation rate. Probably doesn't make sense to put a line there, but it's just there automatically. But this is nice to know, you know, it's 39% of our class of 2004 and 2005 completed a degree. So we know, you know, and this is really kind of fantastic. And, you know, I kind of come before you as a teacher when I present.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that I think the national average, isn't it something like 25%?
I'm sure it's low.
It's surprisingly low.
Yeah, yeah. So we're really proud of it. And then, you know, the other thing about this data is that it's something that it's really, it's much easier for staff to get behind. You know, as a teacher, the STAR test, there's all these things that seem like they're thrust on us. But teachers get behind us. They grab this and it's also hard for them to argue with. And so we really find this data is really important as we look at our curriculum. What are we doing in our classrooms, in our school to keep it the same, especially given all the budget cuts that we've had and the way things are going, and hopefully still improve at the same time? That's the beginning of our sales pitch.
So in front of you is the most recent copy of the layout script. It's that inside is an insert. On the back page of that insert are all the colleges that our seniors have told us they have been accepted to and have plans on attending. And it's an impressive list and this is the breakdown. There are 167 who are reporting they're going to go to the junior college or another community college. 117 are 34%, which is up nine percentage points from that class of 2010, are reporting that they're going to go to a four-year college or university. You see the breakdown there. A lot of kids going out of state. I'm guessing that's connected to the recession.
And the price of tuition.
Exactly. Seven saying they're going to go to trade schools and three enlisting in the military. This is what our seniors are saying they're going to do. And I want to emphasize this point. For the first time now, we have data that shows what they're actually doing. And the first time Scott and I presented the reports you just saw, going back to 2004, our head counselor, Sharon Howell, had one of these moments. And she said, oh my God, I've been lying to the public. She, I'm not making this up. I've been lying to the public. I've been telling everyone that over 80% of our students are going to college. And it's not true. This is what they're saying they're going to do. And now we know what they're actually doing. You know, it's in the 70%, high 70s at this point, which is great. But it's important, I think, as an administrator, as school officials, that what we're reporting and the information that we have is accurate, that we're being transparent. And this, of course, allows us to, yeah, celebrate where things are going well and also to be honest where there's work to do. And I think the data, you know, paints both pictures. But there's a 10% gap between what kids say they're going to do and what they're actually doing. So here's our pitch. Casa Grande is the recipient of a five-year implementation grant for building the small learning communities. And attached to that was this supplementary grant, which is really a drop in the bucket. It was about $8,000 they gave us to start organizing and gathering this data. At the end of the year, that money runs out. Scott Wiggert, among others, is a staff member at Casa who's been given release time through grant funds to do this kind of work. My argument is, of any dataset that we could look at as a district, this may be the most important. It's where the rubber meets the road. It's how we know how well our programs are preparing our students for college and careers. It's essential, in my view, that we continue to do this work. And it's not easy. It takes time. It takes expertise. It takes someone who knows how to gather it and present it to staff to get the buy-in that we're getting at Casa. So the proposal, I think that there should be a concerted effort to track post-secondary data district-wide. I don't think it should be left specifically to the sites to gather and present to their constituencies. This is a district-wide dataset and we're all responsible for it. The student tracker subscription to get this raw data that we presented on the lavender sheet is really cheap, surprisingly cheap. It costs $450 a year per site. Currently, we're paying that through the grant. David, you're paying for?
Site council.
Through site council. I think it's a drop in the bucket. I would propose that the district should pick it up. More importantly, is the release time necessary and the expertise necessary to gather it, analyze it, and disseminate it? And I don't have a specific proposal here, but I think that the district should prioritize this work and should consider setting aside some money for this task. And then lastly, similar to this report, it makes a lot of sense to me that if the district were to invest in release time to do the gathering, analysis, and dissemination, that the sites be responsible, or someone in the district be responsible to present this information annually to the board and to our community constituencies so that the whole Pedaluma community knows how well we're doing. And we're doing really well. This is a great sales pitch for the district. We are 20% higher than the state average and we are improving despite factors that should see us doing worse. So that's really it. I would love to address questions. We have our expert here of data gathering.
Well, I agree with you strongly on two points. One is you need to know who's enrolling in college and who's graduating from college because I think those are both great sell points. And there's different schools that brag about their college enrollment rate, but, you know, there's some that I know firsthand, their finish rate isn't so good. And that shows maybe a lack of maturity or preparation academically, socially, whatever. But I've long thought that we should spend the money to promote that, not just gather that data, but to promote it and market it because it's just a changing environment and to get intra-district kids and parents interested because they have the right to look at us and say, hey, wait a minute. You're 25% ahead of the state average? I mean, let me sign up there. And I think you've hit on a very key point. And I support it and I think that data, you're right, it's probably the most meaningful data of all the data. And we sit through lots of data. So it's kind of the end game. It's like, well, where are we? When you see those kind of results in the different colleges, these kids are going to, I mean, everybody should be commended throughout the child's educational, you know, experience.
Yeah, thank you. I would only add to that, and Scott mentioned it before, but data can play a really important role amongst the staff in establishing priorities. And there's no dataset that Scott or I or anyone else at Casa can present that gets the kind of buy-in and immediate response and interest that this data does amongst our staff. There's no questioning it and you can feel it in the room when it goes up. Teachers are paying attention and they have questions. So it's a great sale or sales pitch to the public to draw people in. It's also a great sales pitch to our staff as a motivator.
I'd also add, and there's a difference here between college admission and college readiness. And if you read the paper and the CSU is just saying 50% of all students have to take remediation, well, we're measuring college readiness. So those 40% of those English students, junior year, they're not taking remedial classes when they get to college. And that's another huge selling point of measuring this data. Because it's one thing to get into college, and I suspect our college admission rate is probably the same as it's been for quite some time. But now if we can say, we're not only going to get into college.
We're ready.
Yeah, we're ready, we get there. And that's big.
Especially when the tuition is so high and you want to get done in as short amount of time as possible. If you're taking a year's worth of remediation, that's going to definitely slow you down. I wanted to make a comment about a month or so ago, I had a parent call who's had a graduate from Pedaluma High, Julia Regan, who won a Fulbright scholarship. And she asked me, do you guys track that? And I didn't have an answer. So, you know, that's the kind of thing to, you know, be able to share with the community when we have the successes of the students as they progress beyond graduation. It's nice to be able to present that.
These guys have been very humble. There are a couple of schools on the graduate list this year that are, there is a student going to Princeton University and a student attending Yale University and a student attending Bryn Mawr University from Casa Grande.
One, just last closing thought. As a representative of Casa Grande High School, I want you all to know that we were just invited to Washington DC for the fourth time, two years. Scott was part of the team I was on and we were asked to present to other project directors and administrators. We were one of 16 schools invited from across the country. There are over 80 small learning community grant schools, so we're among a select group and we were asked to present similar data as really a model program. And it was a great honor and we were all honored to represent the district while we were there.
And what did you learn from some of the other presentations? Was there anything that you saw that you would like to be able to apply in our district?
There's always a lot. Let Scott speak to it, but we were just presenting one idea to our small learning community facilitators about implementation of very clear and definitive pyramid of interventions and all the support structures that different schools are using, really at the tier-one level, at the classroom instruction level. But that's a conversation just two hours ago we were engrossed in. So, yeah, it's a great development for all of them.
What's the reasonable annual number then to sustain them?
Well, so the federal government sent us just a little bit less than 8,000, which got us, bought us a lot of hours of release time. Ideally, I think that a teacher at each site should have a release period to do this work, which would run the district about 17,000 per school. From my vantage point, it's money well spent because I think it sets the. because I think it sets the priorities in ways that are fact-based, data-based, and, as I said, teachers buy into it and the public understand it.
And the one point I think the site base is that Eric and I, we work in a role administrator and teacher, and I think people hear us differently. And when I, I think if Eric had brought this, or if something from the district had brought some of this data, it's not that it wouldn't be interesting, but it might just, you know, land like a rock and then just be set aside, and then it's business as usual. And I think that's been one of the things the IOP, I think, we presented in Washington, is we're one of the few schools who really has a, a lot of stuff is coming from the teacher level, and that's very important. We've worked with a group from Oakland. They can't figure out how to get it from here into the classroom. Well, we've started it from the classroom. And so that's why it's taken on a momentum of its own. That's where the power really is, too.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's pretty good. I want to compliment Scott, because Scott actually comes out of the same place that I came out of. The teacher being the drum roll for this kind of stuff really makes a huge difference. And Scott and I were both teacher facilitators at the same time. Early on, I granted Casa Grande in 2005. So, in some ways, I'm a product of the SIC grant in a weird kind of a backer way. It's under Pedal in the Hive, post-secondary. So, I wanted to compliment Scott with that. I think that's made a big difference in terms of how kids help promote small learning communities at Pedal in the Hive. And parenthetically, you can do two different things in a district, and they can both work. It's just, with great teaching and good teachers and good support systems, we can do a lot of interesting things. But to go back to Casa Grande, an excellent school on the inside. I spoke with Eric earlier in the year about how are you tracking these kids? And he told me all about it, and it was exciting. So, we have contracted with the same group, Student Clearinghouse, to do the same work, and we will start that in the fall. And Mike, I've been talking to Mike, and he certainly wants to talk to you about how you did it, because I think that you did it from the site, and perhaps we can entwine together to do it from the district level so that we can get the right data and continue that data stream from district to your organization so we can get that new stuff back. We've also been working similarly on posting senior student surveys and senior parent surveys. We're waiting until after the year is over, and we're using ZoomRang, and we're connecting the parents and the students. Because the truth comes when they're no longer vested at the school and the site. That's when you'll really get parents and students who will say, "Yeah, let me tell you what really I thought about the school." And I've already had great heart-to-heart conversations with students and parents about things they value and things they thought could be improved at the site. So, those are the kind of things we get out of our own personal surveys to improve the product that we send out to kids. Okay, Jay, you can click on to... So, the options are fairly obvious, four-year colleges and universities, the out-of-state junior colleges, the in-state, the default SRJC, which we hear a lot about, which I'll talk about in a moment, technical schools and institutes, the military. And then those kids who are just ready to jump right into work. And I think that's a missing element that we sometimes forget about. There are a lot of kids who just go, "I'm gonna go work, because I need to start making some money." So, this is 2010-11. Two ninety-nine is our graduating class. So, four-year schools, thirty-two percent went there. Three went to out-of-state JCs, a small number. Five to the military, nine to technical schools, and a hundred and fifty-six out of two ninety-nine to the JC. And again, that's a recording number, as Eric and Scott mentioned. Kids say what they're going to do, and we've all seen them on graduation day and say, "What are you gonna do? Run the JC? How long will it..." How many start there and how many complete there? How far down the road is the word of student tracker and what we want to do, too? I would say, too, that that technical number is understated. And as Chris and Fred might attest, there are many more kids who are attempting technical programs at SRJC, for instance. So, the technical number might be enlarging because of that lumpy number that is the SRJC number. Anyway, a total of ninety percent of Pedal in the Hive grads had focus, had a direction leaving this school in 2010-11. This is 11-12. Four-year schools, a hundred and twelve out of three oh nine, over thirty-six percent. Nine out of three oh nine to out-of-state JCs, four to the military, seven to technical schools, one sixty-one out of three oh eight to the JC, which is about the same percentage as the previous year. Two ninety-three out of three oh nine have direction, over ninety-five percent. So, a slightly higher number, appear to not be that dazed kid on graduation day going... And that's the one that we fear, right? It's that five percent that we worry about and go, "They may not, they really even go home and go, wow, high school is over." And there's a sense of fright in that thought. So, that's good, I think, that we're moving that number. So, four things to think about, at least when I pull this together. The more kids are in a four-year school despite the economy, and Casa has echoed that data, too. The more kids appear to have direction or focus as they move out of high school than before. Many kids opting for SRJC and a desire to track them and see exactly what they're doing to support that very largely to kids. Half of our kids opt for the JC. And we need to really mine that more specifically to really find out where they're going. Are they completing? And then, or are they moving into a technical program that is then not going to be tracked by student tracker, but we can perhaps work with JC to find out where those kids are going and work with some of our CDE folks to find out. They may know if they enter into an apprenticeship job or into another area that is more difficult to track. And the last bit is that more kids should be accessing technical education. And I don't know whether this is a more Pedal in the Hive sense or not from the Casa perspective, but because of the work that Brad and Jean and Dan and Chris are doing, we'd like to see more kids who are more directly saying, "I'm doing technical ed, I'm doing career tech ed, that's my choice and my future. I'm gonna go into manufacturing. I feel like I've been trained to move into an apprenticeship program from Pedal in the Hive and way to do that." I think we've got to open that envelope more and focus on that area so that our parents and our community realize that this could be a hub for a student who wants to move in that direction. And it goes to what Mike had said earlier about being a promotional vehicle for what all these schools have to offer and letting our parents and women know that, not just here in Pedal in the Hive, but in Warner Park, in Bala, we can be a magnet school for a lot of different programs. There is also a list of... It's where kids are going.
I thought opening up the speech will frame you, so I was...
Oh, Mike, can you read that?
Text or... I want to see the text, David.
I'm pretty sure you got it.
I want to see the crystal.
It's a list of where kids are going after they complete final college.
Final college. There you go.
So, this is named cash, but can you see where some of our kids are going? Hannah, who was just here, is going to Colgate. And Kelly, who was student of the month, is off to college at William and Mary, as she mentioned in her couple of kids at DeNix. Is that the Northeastern?
I have no idea. I was worried.
Nice stuff from our Whittaker, please, Eric. College of the Davis is here. And missing from this is the hundred and sixty-one kids who are electing the JC, and that's another list, too, which I didn't include, but... And kids that have UTI, we've got three kids there from UTI. That's pretty much it. I echo what Eric said. I agree that this is critical to have this. There's no other way to really know how we're doing. It's our best check, far better than any standardized test. Our end result is where our kids go and how they do in life. That's what we want as parents, and clearly, that's what we have attraction to decide whether or not we're doing it.
Good job at high school.
Thank you.
And then for the comments, please. Thank you very much. Now we get to talk about budget.
You know, you may want to clear the room quickly.
Stick around for the depressing part.
You know, here in my news, we really need to applaud these guys for what they're doing for the district. Despite the budget cuts, that you guys are still able to...
It's very impressive.
Have that kind of presentation out there.
It's great, yeah.
I'm looking to find where my report was. No, I loaded mine. I loaded mine, and then I...
Down, next one down, two, eleven, twelve.
There we go. Okay. So, we keep this for sweet and to the point. The next couple of budget presentations probably will be a little bit longer. We always do a preliminary budget, attended budget, and then the adopted budget. Hopefully, by the end of that period of time, we have all the negotiations settled. Hopefully, the state will have an adoption budget, and we can have some real meaningful numbers. But we really won't because of the November election. So, the second interim report, this just out hot off the press. There are twelve LEAs with negative certifications. That means that there's twelve out of nine hundred and eighty districts that are not going to, not likely to make their financial obligations to the end of this year. There's a hundred and seventy-six LEAs with qualified certifications, and that means that they're borderline, they're being watched very closely. So, a total of a hundred and eighty-eight districts are on the rocks, and that represents about nineteen percent of the districts statewide. And in total, the number of students, it represents forty-two percent, which is huge. Huge.
What's...
Yeah, that's what I mean. No, they're qualified.
So, it's a huge number. So, we need to... Just going back as a quick review, our second interim assumption, we assume flat funding for twelve thirteen. No cuts were built in either budget cuts or revenue cuts. And it reflected the transportation revenue limit trade-out. So, it's had a slight positive for our district. So, when you look at what our second interim looked like... I've dumped the baton. Okay. Okay, in the current year, we were estimating that we would have just under five point nine million dollars appropriated to help carry us through the next couple of years, where you see the net increase/decrease of our deficit spending. In the current year, we're probably, our deficit spending probably was by about a million dollars. And then, in the next year, you see that we're declining, just under two point four million. And then, in thirteen fourteen, which we estimated we would have a polar, we're still slightly negative, but that typically is made up. So, we didn't feel we would have a problem at second interim declaring that we had a positive certification for our second interim. Average daily attendance in eleven-twelve, our current numbers, these are our P2 numbers that we will be funded on. So, we had a net decrease for our funding base of seventy-two ADA. So, we had a slight decrease of four, we were close in our numbers, of four students ADA in elementary, four students in shared alley, and then secondary was flat funded based on the prior year. Going forward, we haven't changed what we thought would increase or decrease. So, what you see here is just a reflection of that going forward and what that would look like. So, for next year, based on funding, you can see in secondary, we finally go, we're not in the red, we're not using prior year, but we're also not higher than we were in ten-eleven in our ADA. So, that's why you still see a small decrease of thirty-six as far as funding goes. But we're either flat, or, you know, we're pretty much flat in all the other areas. And then, in thirteen-fourteen, we're estimating that we're gonna see a growth of just under a hundred and eighty. So, that's nice, but we haven't seen that in a few years. So, our updates and assumptions for our preliminary budget at this time is that we have an unfunded cost of living adjustment of three point two four percent, and that's up from the three point one seven percent that was previously projected. If you remember back at the second interim, I said, "I don't know how they're calculating this deficit factor, because the math just doesn't work." So, the Department of Finance finally made a correction, and they changed the deficit factor from twenty-one six 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 percent up to a higher, which is what we predicted, twenty-two point two seven two percent. So, how did they get there? Basically, in the current year, our deficit went up because they decreased our ADA, our revenue limit by thirteen dollars first, when the trigger hit. Then that was only a partial trigger hit. And then, when they did the trade-out between the transportation cut in revenue to a revenue limit cut, that also then increased our deficit factor. So, the transportation cut and the thirteen dollars cut is supposed to be a one-time cut and not ongoing. So, what they're saying is for twelve, eleven-twelve, they're going to add those dollars back. So, that kind of decreases the deficit a little bit. And then, you subtract the fact that they're not funding the cost of living adjustment. So, it's a lot of fun. Step in column is included. We have no change in health benefits built in, and cost of living is supposed to be funded in thirteen-fourteen, but we'll see. So, this is what our projection looks like right now for our multi-year projections. In the current year, I've updated the numbers just slightly. We're just over, actually, five point nine million dollars in our current year. In twenty-twelve-thirteen, even after all of the adjustments and some fine-tuning of the budget, we're still looking at an ending fund balance at the end of twelve-thirteen of just over two million dollars. And then, that impact of that revised deficit factor, actually, you can see our thirteen-fourteen year went from being in the red by a hundred and seven thousand to five hundred and twelve thousand. So, you can see how that played out.
So, what's scary is what comes next.
Yes.
So, when you break, when you do the budget at the end of June, don't we have to show?
Yes. Actually, in the next budget that I share with you at the next meeting, the tentative, we will have fourteen-fifteen now.
You have that on the next slide, too? Talking about, it's in your next slide.
Yes, it is. It's coming now. So, I know, you know why? You guys are just so anxious to hear this budget, and I know that. So, what we'll see in the next budget... So, what we'll see in the next budget update is the savings that we are projecting to see from the retirements, netted against what the cost of the supplemental early retirement program costs. The May revise. The May revise is out, but I don't have any of the details. Tomorrow, actually tomorrow morning, I will be attending a conference where I get all the details to update the budget and provide more detail on how it will impact the school district. So, and then with that May revise, I'll include what will happen to the district if it doesn't pass of the initiative in November, and if it does pass. The other thing that's not, that will be included are the district budget committee recommendations for reductions. We're still in lingo with regard to negotiations, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that we don't know where we're headed until November. And so, obviously, people are hesitant into agreeing to anything when you blame them. And then, we'll be adding the 201415 column to see how pretty that looks. So-
Have we heard of the initiative this far?
No, we have not heard about either of the initiatives, ours or mine this time. Our Future, our Children, Our Future has been submitting their signatures, so we should hear from that one. The other one is not projected until sometime in June.
So, and one only needs a little over half a million signatures, and the other one, the Governor's Initiative, needs over 800,000 signatures in a shorter period of time, because they amended the proposal. So, it'll be interesting to see if they can pull that up.
Well, it almost seems like we have to just plan and prepare for the worst and then hope for the best. But that kind of state uncertainty, I mean, I've seen enough cycles now, so we're always just waiting for some axe to fall, or some, you know, coins to be sprinkled upon us. And it's like, we have to kind of deal with the knowns and just build on that.
The budget will happen based on the initiative scale.
Yeah, exactly right. I mean, because anything else is, we're just setting ourselves up for a real problem. And once, you know, you get that far behind the curve, it's, you'll be up there in one of those qualified categories.
Or not qualified.
Yeah, or worse.
When you talk about the fact that, right now, I do have one snippet of information, that if the initiative fails, education will see a $441 cut per ADA. That translates into about $3 million.
Yeah.
I know. So now, you have about $3 million for, you know, next year, and it's horrific.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you gotta get on top of that. You can't beg and hope that the state comes through. I've lost kind of faith in the state coming through, quite frankly, but I think, because I think if we put it out there, then people just think, "Oh, it's always going to come through," and last minute, midnight, you know, administrations are gonna, it's not gonna happen.
No, it's not there.
No.
No.
So, we have to-
You know, somewhat rhetorical question, but you've been noticed for a good period of time, Steve, you have as well. And this is the most convoluted, ridiculously constructed way to fund anything I've ever seen in my life. It makes no sense. Is it ever going to change, or what would it take to get it to change?
Well, they are talking about changing how they fund schools with the weighted student average. And the initial proposal was really not a good one. It wasn't well thought out. It wasn't really taking into account the true cost of, what it costs to educate a K6, a junior high, or a high school, because they had it all at the same funding level, which will not work. And it's at a lower level than, in some cases, what we're getting right now, which is pretty low. So, they've been tweaking it. They have taken into account the grade level costs associated with education. But I still think it's a long way off. And I hope that they actually delay and put more thought into it. Because if you're going to go to a funding model that makes more sense, which would be actually funding based on a grade level, which is how charter schools are funded, and if they go toward more the block grant type model, where school districts and local groups have more discretion on how, what our students need, and how we need to implement it, would be great. So, I don't know. It's, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Well, one thing is, changing that funding formula within the available resources doesn't do anything relative to our position nationwide. It will still be 47, 48. We have to come up with a means of more income for education. And how that's going to occur is really the question. It can't be based on Prop 98. We know Prop 98's failed, and we've been going downhill really ever since it was implemented. And they've been able to manipulate it. It's a matter of coming up with a stable funding base that will support education. Tend to the outside of the general fund, and it has to be, if it's part of the general fund, it has to be guaranteed and not manipulated on a annual basis by legislators.
You can debate back and forth for leveling funding. But just the idea that it is so roller coaster-like when it comes to, as the state goes, the district goes, and you have Eric and his group and David talking about this project that you'd like to move forward for a period of five, 10, 15, 20 years, but that thing's always in the crosshairs every year, because it's the first thing, it's easiest to cut when funding goes up this way, goes up this way. And so, you can't, I mean, this is, I know, as I said before, this is a business, providing customer service to a whole bunch of people. And you can't make any kind of plan for any kind of an ongoing effort, when every year, it's, I don't know what it'll have, I don't know what it'll have, back and forth. It's just so frustrating. Whatever happened to, Christina was, there was a-
There was a movement.
A move, whatever happened to that, do you know?
There was no money.
Are you talking about Stanford?
Yeah, so Schwarzenegger had the study done relative to school district funding. And the year that, it was supposed to be the Year of Education, was the first period of recession. So, when he was planning on finally funding and adding dollars to, on a per pupil basis, to school districts, he couldn't, there was no money. So, the recession got in the way of the Year of Education, and he was losing every cent, at a greater level than the rest of the state budget.
Well, to Troy's point, I mean, Sacramento columnist that constantly follows education-
Dan Orfus.
And he basically said that you couldn't have messed up a financing system more if you tried. I mean, this hodgepodge Byzantine mismatch, and to me, an amazing amount of effort, energy, and expense, that's, that we kind of navigate, like the tail on the tail on the tail of the dog. I mean, we're, it's all over the board, and I sit in here, I'm just amazed. I mean, this wouldn't last five minutes in a private enterprise, and people would be looking like, "What the heck?" I mean, we can't keep living like this.
Well, the federal government has it even more messed up with the requirements that they have for us to track virtually every dollar they give us, and if we earned any interest on those dollars, and do a cash analysis report quarterly to them, before they will give us our next funds. And if we made a bucket of interest, then it's theirs and not ours.
Does the feds understand the discount rate's about zero, right? I mean, interest.
No, they want us to improve that. And if anything over $100. So, the amount of time that it would take, me and my staff, that it takes to do that analysis for all the buckets of money that we have coming from the federal government is absurd. So, when you talk about our funding mechanism, and yes, Dan Orfus commented on that very prominently, but even when you get down to things like, our retirement reporting systems are unbelievably horrifically complicated. So, processing a payroll is unbelievably complicated, and hiring a person to process it is unbelievable. It is-
And they wonder where the money goes.
Right. Because so much of our time and energy is focused on such really unimportant things. We should be spending our time and maybe more efficiently and more effectively processing what we do, and it's unbelievable. It's truly unbelievable.
Yeah, and I'd like to just say, for those who are here, that given what's been cut over the last five years, it is truly remarkable how amazing our schools have educated our kids. You know, and, you know, from top to bottom. It's truly amazing. So, I applaud you all for your hard work and continued efforts. It's horrible being up here, having to make the final decision on these budgets year after year after year after year. And yet, every year, we see bright-ed kids and enthusiastic teachers out there doing what has to get done.
And all this is where the students are going.
Yeah, it's truly remarkable. I keep thinking that it's got to end, that this downward slide of funding has got to stop. But I'm not really hopeful this year. So, sorry. Thank you. Yes. All right. Let's see. Approval of the minutes on May 8?
Thanks, ma'am. We have revised.
Oh, yeah, we had some revised minutes.
Uh-oh, I have a feeling I'm in your way, huh?
All those in favor? I have comment cards, but they're related to agenda. So, unless anybody else wishes to skip on an item not in that, I will skip that. Item I, reporting activities and correspondence of school board members. I attended the County Committee on School District Organization last week, and a couple of things came up. Board terms for the new County Board of Education were decided. And I learned that Old Adobe School District has suspended this participation, this consolidation study. They are looking at a new funding model for their district, possibly going to basic A. So, they want to look at that first, before they continue.
Just that curiosity, Steve, were you told of that, or did we kind of-
Yeah, I didn't know exactly why, but I knew they were looking at something different as opposed to the model or the study.
Did we get broken up by text, or our relationship?
Wants to know how we got dropped.
Was it a Facebook? I mean, the girls have dropped Troy's dance card before, he just wants to know how it did.
We haven't received any, anything in writing.
Nothing formal?
Nothing formal.
Sort of disappointing.
Yes. Various awards, Knights Band, ASB, and I'm sure some sporting awards, et cetera. I can't quite read it. Yes, softball and swimming. And, let's see, the retirement event for district employees. The American Griffithy Car Show, the Cruisin' Boulevard. That organization has, on an annual basis for several years now, donated to fundraisers to our schools, which has been very generous and- The teen novelist reading at Copperfields, we heard about that earlier from one of our students. Mary Collins Open House. So, busy. And then this week, we have all of our wonderful promotions and graduations to attend. All right, item J, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Some of-
Second.
All those in favor? Under Administration, Human Resources, our first item we've held is the Employment Report. Recommended motion that the Employment Report be approved. I have a comment card, who wishes to skip?
Go ahead for the rest.
Okay.
Hey, I think I figured out one problem. On where they list Catherine O'Sullivan, that's a special ed position, not a regular instructional assistant. But the person who's listed up on top, Elizabeth Martin, is higher on the seniority than Catherine O'Sullivan. So, I'm a little confused why that person got put into a job when this person didn't get put into a job. It is my understanding that there are several special ed positions. I thought when it said three, but I thought she was talking to me about, what's her name? Elizabeth Martin. I don't know that she knew maybe Catherine O'Sullivan's student was going to be leaving at the time. I'm not sure. So, that's where my confusion is with Catherine O'Sullivan down here. And I'm assuming that Deborah Wilson asked the bus driver, "That's just a change to her route, since it's effective 5-1." That that was just a route update, they changed her hours?
That would be-
Because somebody questioned me about that earlier in email.
Yeah, that would be just a change in hours.
Yeah. Hey, I don't, just want to be sure, I don't want to assume, because you know what happens when you do that. So, those are my, those are my questions. Just, I don't, I'm confused by Catherine O'Sullivan, I mean, down here, and not Elizabeth Martin. Maybe they both should be down there, I don't know, because Elizabeth Martin is way above her own support.
So, I would recommend that the board modify the report to eliminate the, under number 10, eliminate Catherine O'Sullivan's hiring at this time. And we'll bring it back at a future meeting if it's correct.
Especially because it's supposed to be effective till August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have time to investigate. Okay. Okay, so we've got exception.
Some subject to Steve's exception.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Item three is also a hold item, resolution 111242. Recommended motion of resolution 111242 of the Board of Education of Petalina City Elementary and Joint Indian High School Districts, specifications of election order, declaring that an election will be held on November 6, 2012, in Sonoma County and Marin County be adopted. To move.
Second.
So, this is just the routine item every other year for election, board election?
All right, all those in favor? Under Business Services, item seven is a hold, Petalina City Elementary School District Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Recommended motion that the Board appoint Lindsay Sissom as the parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the Elementary School District as representative to serve on the Petalina City Elementary School District Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee.
Some of-
Second.
As you know, our parcel tax had a component that required an oversight committee. We had a person move on, and this person is replacing-
Okay.
An elementary parent who's no longer an elementary parent there in the High School District.
Right.
This is a weird question, but this occurred to me the other day. We're appointing our own oversight, basically? I don't know Lindsay Sissom.
Yes, we live in volunteers, and-
Know Lindsay Sissom?
She comes recommended-
No, no, I'm amongst the board. Does anybody here know?
What school?
So, I feel comfortable appointing somebody I don't know. I would prefer that. And so, going forward, if we could maybe carve that piece out, I mean, I would prefer to not vote for somebody whose oversight includes me that I know.
Yeah, but it's-
Well, it's pretty, I don't think we're going to exclude.
Okay.
You can.
That's fine.
As far as voting for them, yes.
Yeah.
All right, I think you still have a problem.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right, all those in favor?
You following me on the-
I'm with you.
All those in favor?
Let me come back someday as an oversight.
Everybody knows you don't, you won't vote for him.
Thank you, thank you, back to my point. You see how I did that? You see how I just sucked him right in and run right around?
Okay, item eight, agreement to authorization. Recommended motion, Board authorize a two-year exclusive agreement with NOR Cal Protection Services for security services for athletic games, dances, and other events upon the request of the chief business official. Some of-
Yes, in the past, we've had some difficulty in finding security services for those types of events. And we are luckily, you know, have access to a vendor, and this is a 24-month agreement to provide those services exclusively, except that they are not available.
So, what's the problem with finding people before?
There's just not agencies out there. Steve probably has a better history about the security- Steve probably has a better history about the security, finding security people.
You know, they have security officers, but they're assigned, so you just can't call them up and say, you know, we think we're gonna have problems at this game or this event, and have somebody show up. And this company, we've used in the past, and, you know, they're willing to provide that service as long as we're using them exclusively.
Do we still use the police department?
Yes, we use the police department for our major events. And then that will have that contract...
That's accepted from the exclusive, huh?
Yes.
That's a different...
That's security, but that's police. I see that as a different service.
Good.
And this does not exclude us from using our own current security employees, employees who are doing security for the district.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, award of bid, recommended motion that the board award bid number zero one one two Petaluma City Schools Roofing Project to Henris Roofing Company in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Base bid and add alternates number one and two only via deferred maintenance funds, and the superintendent be authorized to approve change orders up to ten percent and accept the work as being complete.
So moved.
Second. I have to abstain, only because we have a professional relationship with the company and/or one or more of the principals.
Okay. Steve or Rich?
Uh, Steve.
Yeah, just that, as you can see, we had a significant number of bidders on this project. And Henris was the low bidder and we're recommending or accept a little bit.
All this is a little company. Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Okay. Item ten, award of bid, recommended motion that the board award bid number zero two one two Petaluma City Schools Paying Project to WK McCallan Company in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Base bid and an add alternate number one only via deferred maintenance funds, and the superintendent be authorized to approve change orders up to ten percent and accept the work as being complete. So moved.
Second. I'm abstaining on the same basis as the prior one.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, and again, having five companies, or excuse me, four companies bid and recommended award of the low bidder.
Can we just also, for those watching, once we get done with the whole discussion about we have no money? But this is different on...
Yeah, so...
Going back to your broken system?
Yeah.
On the deferred maintenance side, we do have dollar restricted for deferred maintenance purposes. We don't contribute our general fund match to these funds any longer. We do use restricted funds that are restricted capital outlay as our match.
Okay. Did I say all those in favor? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Item one, we have information only. And then our next item is item two, under educational services. We've held that as a second reading on the amended board policy with the recommended motion that the board approve the second reading of following amended board policy. Board policy six one four six point one, high school graduation requirements. And I have, oh, I need a motion. So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have several speaker cards. We had some discussion about this at our last meeting. Jane, did you want to speak, or did?
Um, let's hear from Mother Bo.
Okay, first, okay. Chris Jones?
Hello again. That's all right. I kinda know where it is now. Good thing we're about that. Thank you once again for your time. Let me just preface my comments tonight by what a joy it was, really, to be a part of the last meeting. And I say that in all seriousness, that what we discussed and the type of dialogue that happened that night was, was pretty awesome. And I was very privileged to be a part of that discussion. And I hope that that's, those are the kinds of discussions that continue with some of the things that we're talking about. I wanted to clarify, I'm gonna take a very short period of time tonight. Just wanted to clarify some major points that I made last time, wanted to clarify them again. The first clarifying point to all of this is that, at the end of our discussion at the last meeting, we started talking about a lot of A to G, a lot of college. And I wanted to clarify again AV thirteen thirty and its intent. AV thirteen thirty's intent has no relationship, we're trying to compare apples and oranges. It has no relationship to A to G. The whole intent behind AV thirteen thirty is strictly for high school graduation requirements. It has no relationship to how students move forward in what is required for college graduation, or even to attend AUC or CSU system. So that was its full intent, it continues to be its full intent. And although I believe that our discussion is about A to G and college and where our students are going, and I, tonight was pretty amazing to see all the stats. Had no idea that that was even gonna be here tonight, so it was, to have that preface, what I'm talking about was pretty interesting, noting that a large majority, over half of our students, are not intending that. They're not intending to go to our four-year and two-year colleges, which is, sounds a little bit... It's forty-eight and fifty-two percents that are going to the SRJC is what I saw.
Oh, yeah, they said that, I thought you said over fifty percent are not gonna attend either.
No, no, no. No, 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 no. I was specifically talking about that forty-eight and the fifty-two percent that are choosing to go to our community colleges, that are continuing on to SRJC and making that choice as opposed to going to two-year and four-year colleges. But speaks a lot to just the high school graduation as well. They're looking at their future, and they're looking at getting their high school graduation and thinking about their future in a different manner, which is interesting. Those are all interesting to me. Again, clarifying that major point that I, we, the intent behind AV thirteen thirty and why we're speaking about AV thirteen thirty really speaks to high school graduation, and that is it. The other major point that I wanted to clarify, something that continues to be in discussion, even when we were here that evening, one of the things that was brought up was that AV thirteen thirty is replacing foreign language and replacing VPA, and it is not. That, that particular term keeps coming up in discussions and in emails that I'm seeing. And once again, it does not replace anything. It's merely leaving the options open for students. It's giving students another route to earn their VPA, which is the visual and performing arts or their foreign language requirement. It is opening up a different avenue for students to earn that. The other clarifying major point, and the last one that I want to make, is that the text that is being proposed in the change is not a change at all. All of the electives that are already A to G approved, every single elective at Petaluma High School that has an A to G requirement, or has an AV A to G approval, students already get their visual and performing arts credit. So by merely putting that into the code, doesn't change anything for our students. They already get it. And even if, even though you just add the CTE, again, it's not changing anything for our students. We're proposing, or at least what we're hoping to discuss with you, is that the coursework that is not A to G approved, the coursework that does not have that label attached to it, that students are able to earn their ten, one year of ten credits for visual and performing arts, drafting one, auto one, any of the electives that you can think of that don't have that A to G attachment. It was interesting to hear somebody say, Mr. Sanderson, you said it just earlier, that this is a business. That it's, I've been saying that in the four years, in five years, that the very short period of time that I've been a teacher. And some of the things that I've seen after being twenty-six years in the industry of the period of drafting and design, it's really interesting, and I appreciate that, because I've said that in a number of meetings myself, that if some of the things that we make decisions on and we run with, this, this business would not last a week. And in many cases, I totally understand and realize that your hands are tied. Many of the things that you have to make decisions on have to do with what our state is doing. So I appreciate and applaud your efforts in keeping what it is that we have at Petaluma High School, and the CASA team for that matter. And Ms. Shaffer, you said it as well, that what we have done at our schools and the types of decisions that have been made for Petaluma High School to keep the programs in place that we have in place is pretty amazing, because in most districts, that is not the case. And I still believe that our students not only have that choice, that they have the ability to make some of the choices about their visual and performing arts, they still exist at Petaluma High School, and we can give them that choice. I'd like to end tonight, and this was not, this was not prompted at all either. It was, I went to my email two days ago and got a letter from an ex-student that graduated, I believe, two years ago. His name's Reggie Baker. And in the midst of everything that we've been talking about, Reggie sent me this email, again, completely unprompted. It came out of the blue, and it was really interesting. So I'd like to share that with you, if you wouldn't mind, just a few comments that he made to me a couple of days ago. He says, "Howdy there. I hope all well is back at Petaluma High School. I didn't want you to think I had forgotten about you at all, although I'm contacting you with the intent to discuss business. I'm not sure how the drafting department is doing at this point, but I do remember a couple of years back that there being a big issue in regards to funding. And I also remember that there being some meetings where students were asked to give speeches in favor of keeping the drafting classes around. I always wanted to say something, but never found the time. Such a pathetic excuse." He's writing this at two AM in the morning. "Anyway, I'm studying a biomedical engineering and have to take, surprisingly, a couple of CAD and machine shop classes. And on top of this, I've taken a paid position on campus, working for the Crocker Nuclear Lab, and a portion of my time is spent in a real-life machine shop." A real life, he says real life, because these guys maintain the Cyclotron and are always using super cool machines, like welding, CAD CAM, and actually designing and building usable parts. "Moreover, I'm in the process for applying for an internship at a company called Loma Vista Medical. They're a startup in Silicon Valley making inflatable medical devices for cardiac surgery. Interesting stuff." "And in the application, they stressed a practical background and knowledge of CAD, Inventor, SolidWorks, and applicants to send a portfolio of their work. Naturally, I pulled up my drawings from classes at Petaluma High School. The work I produced in yours and Mr. Richards' classes was miles ahead from anything they've taught me in the 3D modeling class here. It's actually pretty pathetic. I'm writing to inform you that your class was the most applicable class I took in high school. I'm also very thankful that I saved all of my work from the three years in the drafting CAD class. And I don't know if I'll even get the interview at this company, but that's beside the point. I know that most students don't end up like me, pursuing engineering and needing to use my drafting in CAD skillset. But I have personally benefited a large amount from these classes, and the ones at PHS, not at UCD Davis. I knew more than the TAs that were teaching the lab. If you ever need someone to speak at class or speak, or stick up for the department at this district meeting, please don't hesitate to contact me. I'm grateful for having some quality work to show a potential employer. And once again, thank you for your inspiration. I hope life is treating you well." I think Reggie represents a student that we miss. We were lucky to grab him. We were lucky to get ahold of him at high school. I think, if I'm not mistaken, by AV thirteen thirty, that we would see probably... Well, I'm not gonna put a number on it, but I'll bet you the freshmen that come through the class and are able to take some CTE coursework and earn some of that credit, that we're gonna grab them at the high school level. And that we will see more letters like this if we allow students the opportunity to take some of our CTE coursework. Without that A to G label, I think they're important, they're relevant, they're rigorous, and certainly by a number of students, and Reggie's not the only one. He's the only one who's written an email to me, but I've had a number of students who come back every year and tell me that they knew so much more than their classes would even teach them at college, that it was far and above. And I'm sure that there are other classes at Petaluma High School, and CASA for that matter, that probably can speak to the same thing without the A to G label. Thank you for your time.
And Red?
Good evening. I guess I jump off of Chris's concept from last time. I don't show up to this place very often, and I officially, wasn't officially in the conversation last week because I never got up here, so you probably didn't hear about it. But I was totally surprised to hear David's report and CASA's report, not knowing they were gonna be here tonight, but falls right back in the same facts that we talked about before. Over fifty percent of the students go to JC or community college. I think I mentioned last time, being the CT department chair and automotive instructor at Petaluma High. I am still articulated JC two-plus-two program, and so I hate to hear people say that we are not a college-bound direction. That's really what gets me more than anything. So after hearing the facts tonight, of over fifty percent, and only, if I look at my numbers real quick, literally fifteen percent or whatever it was, twenty percent going to UC. And we drive everything to UC, and it comes right back to the truth. Instead of us being followers, we need to be leaders, we need to change things at this level, and get a hundred percent of our students at Petaluma High on track to make sure they graduate. And in reality, looking at some of the numbers that the visual performing arts do and what we do, I don't see how we can't be a visual and performing diagnostic leader in terms of a lot of different things. We don't, I guess you might say, our performance-enhanced projects that we do in my program, where they actually have a plan that finishes, they have applied physics, math, chemistry, you name it, but we're not recognized, which just doesn't make sense to me. So I was really impressed to hear the numbers, that it looks like it's on our side when it comes to the stats. And I tried to follow up on my students over the years. I had no time, literally, to do that, but every time I go out to a repair shop, a manufacturer's seminar, or the dealerships, that's when I run into my ex-students. And flashing or reflecting on what Chris mentioned earlier, I just had a young man come back, who was probably in the middle of the pack, if you'd like to call that, for the graduating senior from a couple of years ago. Didn't write it, came back and shook my hand and said, "Thanks. I'm the top two percent of UTI." Of course, it's a technical stool school, not the four-year college. And he also reflected on the ideas that he was so far ahead of his classmates over there for what he did in my program in the machine shop next door, that he felt totally prepared. And he did not feel second rate, or as a second, I guess you might say, a second-level citizen. So he felt pretty confident what he did. He was very confident and probably quite proud of what he did. So I guess I'm here also to mention to you that we don't need to be A through G, because we do A through G in a different way. And we just need to, we meaning our district, and hopefully the board here, hopefully needs to, I guess you might say, come up with a new concept, take care of everybody on our campus, so... I guess we want to be recognized, and we want to be equal as everyone else. So it's been a long night. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And April?
So I'm Mr. Jones, or one of his students. Oh, I'm Hannah, or one of his students. And his mention about his class being rigorous is definitely true. We're entering projects into every single one of the state fairs, or not state fairs, but... Wow. All these fairs in California and around Europe are entering stuff in it. The mention of arts is very much applicable to Mr. Jones' class and the drafting. Many of the things that we do are artfully related. Also, I know that many of the things with cars, it's extremely artful. You can do so many different things, and so I think we need to be recognized with that for the AV thirteen thirty. It's funny, because I know the company that you mentioned earlier, your student, I know a man that is going into, working with that company. And so he is training future leaders, innovators to... And so he is training future leaders, innovators, to help out with the next generation of products and such. I don't want to speak too much because it's a long night and I have finals all tomorrow. So, yeah, it's a great program. I know many people who are just planning on being a welder for their life, and learning how to bake a really cool cake isn't going to help them. This program or this build makes us that. They can practice welding all four years while they still can do it for no money. They're not paying anybody. They're simply learning all throughout the year. Thank you, and yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, freshman. I'm going to stop. Thanks for your help.
I was going to say, I'm sorry. I am proud to be Tanner's mom. My name is April Durham. I come from a very long background of people who work with their hands. My dad is a diesel mechanic and has been for almost 40 years. My brother now runs my father's business and is a diesel mechanic as well. My husband is a farrier, which is a blacksmith who puts shoes on horses' feet. We moved here from Washington State almost nine years ago, and part of the reason that we moved and we chose Petaluma after a lot of research was because of Petaluma High School's technical program. My boys were in first and second grade at the time, and we looked ahead and we knew that we wanted our kids to have more of an opportunity than to just have a college-based education. And Petaluma High School was the only high school we could find, really, in the state that had a technical program. My kids are very hands-on, they take everything apart, and they seldom put it back together. I'm actually hoping that Mr. Jones and the automotive program can kind of help bring that back. Tanner's very interested in drafting and in engineering. He's also an inventor. He has a good reason to be, he's a type 1 diabetic and also has a heart valve issue, and at some point is going to need that biomedical engineering technology to improve his quality of life for himself, and that is one of his goals. And I think that the CAP program that he's doing now, you can't get that in Spanish class. He can learn Spanish online, he can do art at home, maybe blacksmiths, he can't do that at school. The opportunity that he has, he can't learn CAD at home. He can't learn, he can't earn a CNC machine at home. He can't do that online, he can't do that at the JC, he can do that at high school. And that really was a big part of why we chose to live here. And I really appreciated you considering AB 1330. It makes a huge impact. I have a son who's in seventh grade and is obsessed with cars. He's like a fan of cyclopedia, he will be in the automotive program in a couple of years, and it's his passion. Engineering is Tanner's passion. And I think that opening up this opportunity and not limiting the kids and allowing it to be their choice, we're not saying you can't do art, we're not saying you can't do Spanish, we're saying open the opportunity, let all the kids be represented. So I thank you for your time and all your hard work. I don't know how you guys do the budget stuff. We sincerely appreciate it and thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in all of that. Yes. Okay, so I'd like to keep that from...
AB 1330, as you know, is an optional, it's permissive. You don't have to do anything. We have made, the proposal that has been put in front of you, and we're on our second reading here, really is a proposal that opens the doors for additional kids having the opportunity to look at taking CTE classes as we move forward to the full implementation of the Common Core standards that are going to require all kids being college and, not college or, but college and career-ready. We're going to be looking at opening the doors for all kids to be entering career technical education and opening the doors for all kids to leave school with career as well as college readiness. Just as we saw, we kind of saw the college readiness end of it tonight, but we'll be looking more and more at the career readiness end of it tonight. So with the proposal, what we're doing is we're allowing, the kids already have 65 units of electives that they can take that goes towards high school graduation. So they have a choice, 65 units of choice, and many of them are already choosing the CTE classes, the career technical education classes, the ROP, regional occupation programs, among those 65 units. If, in this proposal, the kids who are also on the A through G track would also be able, they can already choose because they have those 65 units and they can already choose. But we could waive the art requirement in the A through G, well, we can waive the art requirement in the high school graduation requirement, and then they can take one more CTE class if they choose. So what we're doing is kind of opening the door to additional students, opening the door a little bit wider, I guess is what I want to say, because the door's already open through the electives. And what we're doing is opening that door just a little bit wider. We had a really interesting discussion. We had a meeting of the Perkins kind of advisory committee the other day. Dan Sunia and Chuck Ward and Jean from Petaluma High School all came together. And we actually had a pretty deep discussion around the idea of, you know, does A through G, if we require A through G in a CTE course, does it close the door or does it open the door? And we had some anecdotal evidence from the programs over at CASA that it's actually opening the doors to more kids taking more CTE classes, that we've seen the enrollment in those CTE classes actually increase over the last couple of years as they become A through G-aligned. So if we do this, one of the things that we're going to have to do is then support our CTE folks to really look at how we can make their classes, how we can help get their classes A through G-aligned. I included some information in your board packet last week, probably way too much information about how we actually do that and how a class becomes A through G-aligned. So what this does is it actually opens those required, opens the CTE classes to more kids.
Can I just ask a question? Chris, is Architect Design and AutoCAD for both art and visual performing arts classes?
They are not.
They are both A through G classes?
No, just Architect.
Well, they're both mentioned under what the board is approving next or already approved. They're both college prep classes?
I don't know how, what year it is.
AutoCAD for, and it's basically an A through G elective class as opposed to being visual performing arts. And there are several classes that we're adding that are not visual performing arts classes to the list that we will accept as visual performing art, because they're A through G and CTE classes. So it's not, it's not that we're, because we went through this at cabinet, and one time we were limiting it just to those that were visual performing arts classes already, A through G, so we didn't need to do it. With the recommendation that we have, there are several classes that are not visual performing arts that will meet that requirement as CTE under the recommended board policy.
They are A through G under the G requirement.
The G requirement, the elective requirement, the A through G elective requirement.
Here's my confusion. At the last meeting, and this is a very, 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 very busy time, so this has been about 15 minutes in my mind, it seems like we're just sitting here, and this is such a complicated issue, and I felt like we kind of left it where they were really saying, "We need to talk about this." And I kind of walked away thinking, "Okay, we got to follow up with that." And then it's back to the board, and you talk about the folks you did talk to, but these folks are way more expert than I am, as are you, but you're seeing something really different, and we've had no follow-up since the last board meeting.
Other than, other than the information in the board letter?
That, that was a lot of numbers and a lot of stuff, but that was, that was not a dialogue. That was not, we got together again with Mr. Jones and, in other words, we had come here tonight and you had said, "In that meeting with Mr. Ward, they were there, and now they feel this way, and so we're back to present again." It just feels like 15 minutes have passed and I don't think anything really happened. I don't feel comfortable that there was any kind of resolution. And I don't feel I'm any more educated than I was two weeks ago when we were here.
I guess, I just have, what's the downside of following AB 1, whatever it is?
I can share with you the recommendation for administration.
Numbers day, right?
Yeah, AB 1330. So we're trying to meet two board goals. One is increase CTA, CTE classes, and the second one is to increase the number of students who are A through G. And when we had the discussion, and this is what we shared with us, when we had the discussion at the cabinet level with principals in the room, the issue is that students will self-select in ninth grade or 10th grade to take classes that are CTE in lieu of taking the A through G, and then get to their senior year, thinking they're going to the JC, she's asking them, get to the senior year, and now my GPA is great, I have the opportunity to go to a four-year school, but whoops, I don't have an opportunity to go to a four-year school because I didn't take the A through G classes. So those are the competing board goals that we're wrestling with. And I, I mean, I can...
But that gives, that goes to their perspective, though, that we don't have, we have 50% are going into the junior college. Well, hold on, and, and that if now that we vote for this, that those kids then won't take those classes and will go to the A through G.
So we're not decreasing any opportunity that they currently have. We widen it just a little bit more to allow them, but they're taking those courses now. We're not narrowing it. They want it to widen it more. And so when you widen it more, you're going to decrease the number of A through G. And even though we have 52% going to, we don't know what percentage of the 52% are going there to get their general ed and are four-year college-bound. And that's, and that's a significant portion. I mean, I don't know about...
Hold, 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 let's kind of finish this and then maybe we can jump back there.
Go ahead. You were going to say something.
But I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling with the choice piece because there's a chance somebody might do that. But I think we put responsibility back on our kids and our parents to get all our counselors and figure out what it is that they want to do and make sure that they take the classes, the courses that they want. And I feel like that argument, to me, doesn't hold weight because of that reason. If somebody accidentally chooses something and it makes them create a scheduling problem in their junior year, well, they can probably fix it in their junior year, or they can do what a lot of kids have done to get that G requirement, is go to the JC and take a photography class. I mean, that, that certainly has happened as well. So I, or a zero period. But, you know, to me, the struggle that we have is how do we support the CTE program, but at the same time, as we look at the 17th and the 16th kids in the CASA groundy class that we've seen 1 through 20 all year who are graduating with a 4.4 GPA, when they're not advanced placement. I know Reggie, and that's great that he did that. He may have wanted to take a bunch of automotive classes and a bunch of welding classes, but he probably, quite honestly, wouldn't have the GPA to get him to where he was if he hadn't taken all these advanced placement classes that he took, probably in lieu of, so I guess I just, my whole piece in my conversation with Jane before is that I just struggle with that. I don't see, I don't see the downside as being greater than the upside or the potential upside. That's just my spin-off.
I tend to agree with Troy. I think you can set it up, Steve, so that on the off chance that a handful of students wake up their junior year and think, "Oh, my gosh, I'm not qualified."
We strongly feel that we have a lot of students, a lot of students in this district who get there and they realize in their junior and senior year without an opportunity to fix it, that they're two or three short. And one of the board's goals is to increase A through G. We see that 1330 in this full implementation will be contrary to that goal of the board. You will have fewer students graduating with A through G. So I guess it's, it's a matter of, for the board...
It's a competing concern.
So you, which, yeah.
I get it. It's a competing concern, which is...
And we're trying to balance both.
Right, right, right. Laurie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. I didn't know if it was, oh, can I say something?
Yes, sure.
So Troy actually said exactly what I wanted to say. So I think that we have those accountabilities in place, we have counselors for that, and that people make choices and they have to live with those cause and effect relationships as they move forward, and that they do have opportunities to rectify those cause and effect relationships as they move forward, which we could call ramifications. I just wonder, when you speak to the, you know, safety net that you're speaking of, I love that idea of that safety net, you know, that we want to make sure that we're giving and creating opportunities for everyone and we're putting them on the right path. But I, I just think that I would wonder where the evidence is to support that at this time. Give me three examples of, you know, people who've made those choices and have come back to the district and say, you know, "I cannot believe it, but you ruined me or my life because I didn't, you know, I just don't know where that example, where those examples are, and I just, I just question whether or not, you know, they're there." And, and I also think that we need to look at the recession and what's happening in California at this time. You know, I think opening the doors for people to become career technical, you know, and move advancements in those areas, not necessarily going to college or maybe also going to college, are opportunities that I would be, I think we'd be amiss if we don't promote this. I mean, we're going, we're changing our, you know, our environment here, you know? And I just want to say that, you know, I have two children who are in elementary school, and I hope they want to go to college, but if they don't, I think the safety net in itself is that we have this program and that we might be ruining the original intent of AB 1330 by putting those A to G criteria on it.
The other thing about, 1330 is sunset's in 17?
2017.
So 2017. So at this point, the state even wants to take a look at it after a few years to see if it's working. And again, this is a board policy we're talking about, and cabinet does make recommendations relative to the board policies. You own, own the policies. You know, I definitely feel strongly one way in looking at board goals and trying to balance it. I have personal reasons I, in regards to, to it as well, that I think there are a number of kids early in high school that make the determination they're going to a trade school or the junior college, that if they had taken the appropriate classes as freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, would be in a different track. And I just think that, that is a lot more prevalent than maybe...
I don't know that I disagree with you, Steve, but, but I think you can also spin that the other way and say that, you know, we may miss kids who are juniors and seniors who now can't, because they don't have time, go back and take welding, whatever the course is, Auto 1, Auto 2, Auto 3, all the way through 4. And you can, and I guess I'm just kind of looking at like, if I screwed that up as a junior and I didn't take what I was supposed to, because now I've changed my mind, I have a place to go that's fixable, where is the other way you can get down? I mean, I'm not like this, I'm like this, but I see the point.
Go ahead.
No.
Well, the fact of the matter is, you can come out both ways. You could take A through G and think, "God, I really..."
And not go to college.
I don't want to go to college. I know a guy that did that, and he probably makes more money than most people in this room working for Chevron as a line welder, honestly. I mean, we should all have done that, but, we want to be around oil refiners. Anyhow, the point is, he could have gone to any college he wanted. He didn't want to do it because it kind of goes to the young woman's point there, that some people just want to work with their hands and they just want to get out and apply it. And I get what you're saying, Steve, about the competing goals, but I think I'm, I'm a little less concerned, as long as we get kids graduated, they know if you want to go to college through our counseling, to Laurie's point, that you track this way, and if you don't track that way, for whatever reason, like Chris says, you can change. People, ninth to 12th, there's a lot of growth goes on in those kids. They can still bolster, go to the JC. I know somebody today was telling us they're going to go to the JC for one year, and then off they go to, I think they want to go to Davis, but they had obviously a couple of classes they needed to pick up. I think that's a pretty common track, and we're blessed to have the JC. I think that's a pretty common track and we're blessed to have the JC and, you know, most communities do, but we have a great one. And I'm not so sure that it's not that big of a, a oops. It's like, oh, well, I spend a, a year at JC. I mean, for an eighteen, nineteen-year-old, it's not like it's a big.
You have to get sixty.
Okay, so you spend two years. So it's not, it's not a big setback that just kills your life, like, wow, I'm two years behind, it was my life.
Okay, in, in the context of time here, I did want to make, just to throw this out. I would like us to look at, and, and maybe I'm the only one, making a CTE course a high school graduation program. Because I think that would give everybody the opportunity, and there's such a variety, everybody the opportunity to look at an application of a skill that could help them in their decision whether they're going to go to college or not.
And if I can share with you that I totally disagree that we shouldn't do that. And the reason I disagree is if you want to go to the elite school, the requirement is you've taken the most rigorous and relevant classes.
No, I understand that.
And so you could be, you could ace lots of kids out of, you know, the opportunity to go to a Stanford, a Harvard. That, I mean, they just, there won't be any eligibility for them to, to do that.
I think people that are at Stanford, Yale, Princeton, Harvard, I think they are already on that track.
But she just took them off that track.
Okay. I, I disagree. I, I want to say one thing.
Well, it's probably going to be a separate discussion.
There'll be a separate discussion. Since we're going to vote on this, I just need to feel like I need to speak my piece and I'll take thirty seconds. My husband and I both ended up bart police as bart police officers. He traveled the world, had held every job in the world and decided, I think I'm going to go back to college a couple of years after high school. My parents pushed and shoved and I went all the way through UC Davis and I went to Los Angeles. When I passed the bar and I ended up a bart police officer. So there's two people that went completely different paths and ended up in the exact same place. My point being, I think if you're going to go to Yale, you're going to go to Stanford, you're going to go to Princeton, you're taking, you have four-point-seven-five or whatever. Oh, my gosh. I think, I think you know it and I, I think that person's going to get there. And I think if you're someone that, that, that needs something else, we need to make sure we don't close that door. So that's just where I'm standing to my point.
So this is, again, this is the board policy. So if I'm hearing the majority of the board, you would not pass the policy as proposed and want it modified to fully implement thirteen thirty.
I don't know if that's.
I'm not sure that that's the answer, but.
Right, but I, I would like to have further discussion about this.
I want more discussion.
Yeah. So I, I'm not sure where the.
So what discussion haven't, hasn't occurred is virtually never do we have this detailed discussion relative to, to a board policy.
I think it's looking at, I, I think I need to see, and perhaps I've been remiss in not completely look, but I thought I had looked at everything and seeing the courses that apply under our current policy, under this recommended policy, and then, you know, the other option, which would be open it up to not A to G. So I, I'd like to be able to see the detail of the coursework. Does that make sense of what I'm asking, or am I being completely?
So if, we actually have the material in here tonight because the next item, or the later item is to approve the revised document twelve thirteen.
No, we already did that.
Excuse me, that was a consent, but I mean, it's, it's later on in the agenda as you look at it. And so every class that you see that is a CTE class, so.
Under item E three, we're page, uh, page seventy-one.
So, yeah, that's because every time we talk about this, I'm going back and looking at this because it's all, the information is here before you. So the college preps, everything that has, has a P is an A through G class.
So if you look at, if you're looking for CTE like courses, you can look, the first set of them comes under agriculture on page seventy-five. The next set is business right underneath there.
So the ones with Ps under business, three D animation, RP, that's, that, that would probably be a visual and performing art class.
Yeah.
But advanced accounting will count, and that's, that would be an elective class.
That's elective.
So that would be able to count towards thirteen thirty, as well as, no, graphic design is probably another visual and performing art.
And that's the distinction that, that I'm asking for, is to, to identify what currently meets the visual and performing arts. Obviously, the foreign languages is separate. And so I think, I think, you know, one other column on there to see what the, what's being included new. Does that make sense? It's what your recommendation is.
It wouldn't be anything that is not already listed here.
No, what I'm saying is, for example, he went through and said, those two under business already meet the visual and performing arts.
So you want to know which, which one of the letters?
That's not that letter, open door.
Right, which one of the letters?
Yes.
The next set is industrial technology on page seventy-eight. And you'll see architectural design and auto cap.
Those, those are two currently don't meet the visual and performing arts.
They're not visual and performing arts classes and they, they under, what we're recommending would now apply.
Right. But those are classes that are taken later in the program, so.
So the student can not, I mean, you can take your visual and performing art as a senior, you can take it as a freshman.
You can take that. No, I know, but what I'm saying is you can't take auto cap four as a freshman.
No. Basically, you would go through and.
You were asking what board members stand. I can tell you right now, I'm not educated enough to vote for this with A to G. That, that could be just one vote that you asked where we stood.
No, I'm not educated.
I feel like the perspective from some people that are, no, we've got two effective, some really powerful, all-knowing people. I feel like staff on this side of the table and staff on, you know, that side of the table. And I'm, I'm going to obviously need to meet with these gentlemen on my own time and get educated. I may disagree with them once I do that. I may not, but that's where I am tonight.
Is there any possibility, I, I realize it's a busy time of year, but is there any possibility? Does it have some kind of workshop thing where we go through this stuff? I mean, obviously not before graduation.
No, no, no.
That's not a possibility.
Yeah. I don't know, how, how do you guys feel about this? What, what do you want to see? Our next step.
I think Carolyn makes a good suggestion. I, I think a workshop would be great, given what Sherri said and stuff to get more into it because even if you do the visual arts, like Steve was saying, the overlay, I don't even have a real good idea on which of these, I mean, I see a couple, let's say, industrial technology. They've got two apparently that qualify for college prep, right? So under the new visual arts, I mean, how many more of these are we going to include under that? I mean, I want to, I, I don't want to be that limiting. I mean, so Steve, I, I'm like Sherri, we need more education to know, okay, what can we meaningfully open this up to? Because if I hear it right, it's we want to open up this. If we can give people the best of both worlds, exposure to CT and you get a, a college prep credit out of it, I mean, that's the home run, as I see it.
Well, yeah, the one, the one thing that, that we haven't done significantly, that, for instance, Sonoma Valley has gone just the opposite of this board is talking about. Sonoma Valley has said all students will graduate, to graduate from Sonoma Valley High School, you have to have A through G.
Right, I disagree. But he ended the college and he don't, I mean.
But you don't have to go to college. Their, their idea, their idea is that by having that education, you're better for whatever you're going, whatever field you're going to go into.
And this board disagrees. Yeah, not if you couldn't, not if you couldn't get what your true aptitude was.
Well, again, but a lot of these courses that are CTE can be A through G.
Now, let's do that first.
We haven't, that we haven't.
That's the, that was kind of the, the, that was the, 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 one of the results, actually, in the new Perkins grant, the new application, one of the goals is to help get more courses A through G.
Right, but I'm hearing that might be a real struggle. And so if we go this way and then we can't do that and it changes everything, then we've stepped on ourselves.
We're not, we're not, we're not eliminating or decreasing the opportunity that students currently have.
Well, you have a perspective in the room from some highly.
They're not saying, they're not saying that we're decreasing or eliminating.
No, but the, the, the perspective I'm getting is that counselors may steer people away from the programs that have aptitudes for to go through A through G. And there's a heavy perspective that feels that way. I need to find out why and see if I agree. That's where I am.
Well, is the issue because A to G need to be highly qualified?
Yes, yes. And, and so, right, and so that would change our program and we may not be able to get these programs A through G now.
Because right now, Chris, you, you teach the two classes that I mentioned, right? And you, are you highly qualified under what you think No Child Left Behind H two T is?
I would hope with twenty-six years of experience in the industry that would give me the time to qualify.
Well, legally, I mean, is he a teacher?
No child left behind.
Needs to.
Well, we know where No Child Left Behind is. They just haven't taken the proper steps in Washington yet.
About one, two. But I mean, just two, and I'll keep a very, thirty seconds. Every single senior leaving my program this year is going to a four-year college. Some of the finest that we have, Cal Poly, Davis, every single one of them, Northeastern, all the ones that you see up there. What I'm shocked with and the reason I'm so strongly for AB thirteen thirty, what I'm shocked about is for the last three years attending my senior recognition night, how many students walk across that stage saying that they are going to the next college to be mechanical engineers, biomedical engineers, you name it. And there, I have plenty of people here who attend that, who will testify to the fact that I didn't see them once in my program, not once. That scares me. And it scares me because what I know is happening, even with a very short period of experience in schools, I know exactly what's happening, is that counselors are steering them to A to G. They are going to those four-year colleges and they are going to A to G and that's where they're making them go. But they, and they're steering away from the courses that aren't A to G, like my courses, because they don't meet that college requirement. And yet, the students that are taking mine are usually the juniors and seniors that have some extra things and they're actually, they're still attending the same colleges. They're, they're attending the same ones.
And they're prepared.
They're attending the same ones because they're, they've got the A to G. They're going back to what Sherri said. They're on that track.
You're buying a watch.
Well, the question I have, I don't need to ask any specific, but if we're one of the few high schools that are doing this, the colleges must be taking these kids in and training them at a pretty remedial level. So you come in, but I mean, the colleges must be set up to, you want to be a civil engineer and your high school didn't have any engineering program. I mean, they must be taking you from that point and building you to whatever level you need to build.
To your, to your point, I actually agree with you, but for this. Because quite honestly, the way that that would work is if Cal Poly felt it was so important that their admissions would fix that. In other words, the demand from the top would come down. I agree with you, generally speaking, but just on that point, I don't because the colleges would demand, just like Harvard demands that you take the most rigorous whatever and you get a five-point-eight or whatever you have to get, get into Harvard now. So, but generally speaking, I agree with you.
Okay. I don't think we're going to agree on this tonight. So I would like to move it on to another agenda. I apologize, but I just, I don't think we're going to make this decision tonight.
So, do we have a question?
Oh, I know.
So you have, you have a first and a second, so you would need to.
Don't start your card.
Well, yeah, first and second, so you would need to basically agree to table the.
Or we could vote on it if you want to vote on it.
No, I'm not ready to vote.
So you can, whoever made the motion can ask for it to be tabled at this time. And then whoever made the second.
So you make the motion to table it this time. I make the motion to table it this time.
Okay.
I want more discussion.
Okay.
I would even vote for a workshop for me personally.
So do I need a second? So.
Does she have a second to table?
Agreed to, agreed to table the item.
All right, he said yes. Okay. Can I do it all in favor of that? Or is that good enough?
Uh, no, it's tabled, there's no motion to.
Okay, very good. All right. And now we get to report on actions taken in closed session. Okay. Case number forty-nine. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site's discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. So move.
Doug.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case number fifty-one. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site's discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operating school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So move Doug.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number fifty-two. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site's discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operating school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills or anger management counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So move. Doug.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case number fifty-three. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site's discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So move. Doug.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Future business and calendar of activities for board members' consideration and agenda items for our next meeting.
At the next meeting, we will have closed session item on the interviewing of the Pangrove principal. So is the board available five o'clock on the twelfth?
I will not be here June twelfth.
I'll be here twice, which may once for Sherri.
And then I actually have to come at four.
Yeah, I'll be at four, I guess. Now I can do it.
June twelfth, five o'clock. Okay, so we'll have the interviews before the open session.
Can you do the three that are in it because I'm not going to be available either.
You're not there on twelfth? Okay, so there's just the three of us.
Three, you'll be here for the twelfth of the interviews.
I will make sure I'm here. And then July twenty-fourth.
And then on, the next meeting was to change from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth.
Because I have a scheduled change. And so does July twenty-fourth work too?
I can do twenty-fourth.
Okay, great. You guys?
I'll be there on July twenty-fourth.
Okay, very good. So we'll change from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth.
Great. And then we'll see in a video, congratulations and promotions.
Before you adjourn, I want to step, you have a line a little bit, but I just wanted to introduce you two. I'm the new president-elect for the PFT, before you all run off, because I'm going to run off here in a minute. It's late. So this is Colleen Maloney. She teaches at Pangrove and she will be the new PFT president in the box. Thank you.
Whoa, whoa. Are you counting the minutes, Laurie?
Well, I mean, officially, officially, I could say this is my last union day, but. but I have some negotiable...
Thank you for coming.
Well, I may have finished negotiating, I don't know, Mike, you asked me.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm adjourning this meeting for signing of papers of report nature.